Excuse me, gentlemen. Excuse me, gentlemen. This meeting is... They're still on?
It's going away from its original state property. Everybody would get the same level of health care.
And you're getting away from universal health care. This seems like a sweet idea for the Trump.
Excuse me, gentlemen. Excuse me, gentlemen. This meeting is... They're still on?
The National Focus. He's going away from his original state property. Everybody would get the same level of health care.
Hold on. I'm sure we're just... And you're getting away from universal health care. This seems like a sweet idea for the Trump.
Excuse me, gentlemen. Excuse me, gentlemen. This meeting is... They're still on?
I could be wrong. I don't think anybody knows. Everybody would get the same level of health care.
Hold on. I'm sure we're just... And you're getting away from universal health care. This seems like a sweet idea for the Trump.
They're huge lobbyists. Huge lobbyists. Anyway, we have these... Wait till Mike is here. Good to see you. You know Jim's here for the next two weeks, starting Friday. Yeah. I'll keep him down. Yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
You know, Jim Chapin's chips.
Jim Chapin? That's Mary's husband?
Yes. Yeah, that's his son.
And what's his brother's name?
Danny.
No, he worked at Water and Sewer.
Eddie Paul.
Paul Chapin. Was it? He was like Director of Operations or something like that. Right? A long time ago.
Was he? No, I don't... I think that was sort of different Chapin.
No, it was his... It was.
Really?
I'm pretty sure. I could have the name wrong.
Anyway, we have our summary of items here.
Do actually let me give you a couple of things that I'm gonna ask you to sign along with this. Is this the creative commuting contest memo? If you guys could initial that, I will distribute that to lab with all the forms. That's where people can take various creative forms of commuting vehicles.
The creative commuting, so they can... Forms of getting to work. And this is the week of June 22nd through June 26th. So you can use your bicycle, your airplane, which...
Well, only if it's an energy efficient airplane.
That's right. That's right. So Roger can't fly to the commission meetings from down in the Gulf.
Unless he takes a lot of people.
Yeah, or he could do a glider maybe.
Yeah.
But so then, so you can bike, or walk, or swim.
Or train.
Or train.
Or bus.
Or sail.
Or sail.
Or bus. Or take their horses.
But we're being facetious. It's to encourage people to use alternate forms of transportation, especially public.
The bus would be the best.
This is a little bit late, you know, as far as people seeing it. But tomorrow is Dump the Pump Day for encouraging everybody to use public transportation, half price fares and stuff.
Okay, all right.
I didn't know that.
It's in the paper. I guess it's in the paper.
I haven't had a chance to...
So you just need to initial on this?
If you got at the top, under where your names are, your commissioners, right there. Yeah, just initial at YouTube bill, and I will distribute that. I have a draft contract for between us and the town of Dennis. If you could take care of that.
Yes.
I do have actually an anti-star easement. We are splitting the meter out here between... Right now, we have one line coming in, feeds Superior Court and Deans and Probate. We're gonna split that near. It'll help us be energy efficient. So if you could take care of that.
Energy efficient meter? It just means that it's...
No, but it'll help us measure what the energy consumption is here and what the energy consumption is over there. So that's what we're trying to do. And then, so there's that.
As an old man with a C-5713 meter standard, meters just measure what you're using.
That's all they do.
Yes, you may continue, Mike.
And then, I have in my hands the cooking company workers' compensation renewal contracts. And I have spoken to Melody Barlow, a cooking company... Cooking Company, as you know, is our third party administrator for workers' comp. And I apprised her of the situation with respect to the sheriff and his potential to go to the state. And so what she suggested is we sign that contract, implement that contract. They bill us on a quarterly basis anyways. If the sheriff goes to the state, we contract... We will cancel that contract. If he goes to the state at some time in the future, say January 1st, which is what I'm hearing, we'll cancel that contract. And if we need their services, we can do then another six month contract. So I'm comfortable with that. The reason I say if is when the sheriff goes to the state, I'm gonna seek a quote for full workers' comp coverage. Right now, we're self insured, and we have an excess workers' comp policy. I would seek full coverage for everyone left except for the sheriff. And the rate would be pretty favorable, I think, because most of the losses are associated with sheriffs.
Do you need everyone's signature on this? It only has one here.
I need two.
You need two.
You two to sign it, you and Bill, and we'll make it official.
I have a question.
Yep. And then I only have informational stuff, so...
I just wanted to... The takeover, they're very concerned. I mean, it's our understanding that even though the money would be taken over by the state, the dispatch is not at risk here.
What does that mean? Let me explain. Right now, all of the sheriff's functions, including the 911, dispatch, the radio repair, the BCI, criminal investigation, all of those functions would go to the state. They would be under the state's control. And it's been that... It's kind of been the assumption every time the transfer issue has come up, it's been the assumption, and no one's questioned that assumption because I think of a couple of things. One, the sheriff has always said that's, you know, these services are gonna continue, it's not gonna be an issue. Two, the history of the state with all the other assumed sheriff has always been that. They really haven't impacted what the sheriffs have done. So I think that assumption has been there. I would say Senator Leary did include an amendment, and I can't remember what exactly that amendment, I believe it got passed, that dealt with some of those questions. Of course, he can't guarantee funding long term for all of these.
Does that include the hospital piece?
No, it's a little bit different. Guaranteed, I think, that if the state ever wanted to close down those services, I believe what it said was, "We have the option of kind of picking them up and running them if we wanted to." I think that's what his guarantee was.
Getting back to the, you know, the issue with the hospitals, I understand that they've been meeting with President Murray about that.
Right.
And that she's been, at least what I've read in the paper, that she's been supportive of, you know, let's say of beyond October. Right now...
Well, my understanding of what they're supportive of is special legislation that would allow a bill to be imposed on, whereas using service...
It would be tied to health insurance.
It would transfer it to the cost originator. Yeah.
Which would be the, you know, which would...
It'd be a charge, exactly.
Yeah, it would be... It would be a communications charge that would be added to the ambulance service.
Correct. That's what I understand.
But they'd have to have legislation passed without?
I think, yes. My understanding is they would need special legislation to do that. Can't do that right now.
Because if you take... If you were paying for the cost of an ambulance as part of a, you know, as part of recovery or seeking emergency services, all the costs that are associated with the ambulance, to me, are eligible for reimbursement by your insurance.
Apparently, that's not... I couldn't argue specifically with you, Bill, but apparently that's not the case right now.
I find that interesting. It just...
So that's what they're doing. And I'm just looking quickly at our schedule. Next week, we have the solid waste update coming in. The week after that, we're doing the water protection collaborative.
Now, that's different than the solid waste update that we got from CMAS, right?
Yeah, we're gonna ask the commissioner.
So we're not going to have Andy next week?
No, he's the first. It's two weeks.
Okay.
Andy's the first. So the next chance we really get to have the sheriff, especially at the jail, is the 8th of July, if that's okay with you.
And I also would like to ask that we ask Cape Care there, just because I thought Pat wasn't gonna be able to be here, and I wasn't gonna be able to stay in between. They are meeting with the Assembly today, so...
Yeah.
And they're giving a full presentation of... It's been a couple of years since they've been there. Their conversation with us was just going to be sort of a quick update. So could we put them on the calendar for the 17th?
How about, you don't want them on July 1st? We could do both.
I don't think they can do it July 1st, so...
So July, what's the 15th it would be?
The 15th.
Sure.
Okay. And I'll confirm that with Brian, or you can confirm that with Brian.
Yeah.
You have his information.
Yep.
We do have to look at the... This CMed thing and see if we can work out something to put everybody at ease, at least through the next year until legislation resolves it one way or another, hopefully. So, okay, so we'll meet with the sheriff on the 8th, if that works for him.
Yep, that's what I'm trying to do.
That's good.
Yeah.
And is there anything else?
I just have some informational stuff. Well, you can... We wanna do the votes?
Let us do the votes. I reviewed this, and I had no problem. Did you have? So I will make a motion that we accept and approve.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
So approved. Ed, do you have any questions first?
I have an invitation from the Town of Barnstable Growth Management and Community Services Departments inviting you to a meeting to discuss implementation of the Barnstable Village Plan Thursday, June 25th, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at St. Mary's Episcopal Church down the street here, 3055 Main Street.
If I go into that Protestant church, will I be able to get out?
If you go into church, they're not gonna let you out.
I'll tell you a story. I went into St. James's in New York, and I kinda tell it right now. It's very...
That was June 26th, is that?
That was Thursday, June 25th, yeah.
Twenty to Thursday.
Seven to nine, I think.
And you said seven... Okay, here it is.
Yeah, you can take it.
It is seven to nine, yes.
And you should have also received an invitation to the Americor Cape Cod Year 10 graduation. You agree with that?
When is that?
That is Thursday, July 23rd, 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. at the Tilden Art Center.
My phone got ran over.
You must be...
I got a cloud over me.
Withdrawal.
Yeah, it was... Well, you know what? For a whole day, I kept saying, "I'm not sure who's trying to get in touch with me," but...
I noticed you weren't looking down during the...
Yeah.
I haven't gotten any calls from her. That's why you can tell something.
Yeah, I know. Mike was happy.
Sheila, you know one of these people that texts during meetings, are you? Oh, heavens to Betsy.
Yes.
You can get the new iPhone.
I want the new iPhone.
Well, show me your mine when I get it.
Oh, yeah, I know. I want one because I think it's... They're easier to use.
Oh, I had someone that owned one, and when it died again, and that was the fifth one.
The black one, yeah.
And I said, "No, it was a Verizon thing."
Yeah, I know. I know. I... It's... Anyway, you won't be doing commercial or disparaging commercials against anyone.
The other thing I could do, if you guys wanna do it now, if not, I understand, we have a retirement board meeting on Monday, and it was a special meeting to go over an RFP we had done for Retirement System Software. But that's... But at the end, we went over the retirement legislation that was recently, yesterday, I guess, signed by the governor. I could go over that with you, but if you wanna do that in the future, it's up to you.
Commissioner?
It's up to you.
How long will it?
Just a few minutes.
Well, then, let's hear it.
I would say, you know, and I said that to Bill, in general, if you're kind of a normal public employee who has one, you know, job, one full-time job, this stuff's really, in general, not gonna impact you in most ways, maybe in some ways. But there are some significant changes that they did. I think one of the most significant one is, and it was the great debate, is whether this applies to new employees or everyone in the system. And they chose right now to make it applicable to everyone in the system, so it's probably a major one. Yeah, I think the other major change they made is they made some changes to the definition of regular compensation. That's been a big issue. That's been in the news a lot. It's been a big issue at the retirement board level.
Well, that's what that means, regular compensation as opposed to...
It's what retirement deductions are taken out of and what goes to impact what your actual retirement calculation will be. And that's why it's so significant, and that's why, you know, oftentimes, either through special legislation or court cases, people will try to get things included because it basically raises their ultimate retirement amount. So they've clarified some things for that. For example, they've taken out clothing allowances, they've taken out automobile usage, which was a bone of contention for a number of years there. And they've changed the definition in terms of amounts paid as early retirement incentives or any other payment made as a result of the employer having knowledge of the member's imminent retirement. And that changed because before it was as a condition of your retirement. So they made, I think, some significant changes to the definition of regular compensation that are gonna impact some people, no question.
Do you think that they're positive?
I think in general, yeah. I think this was an area that we spent a lot of time over the past couple of years, even at the retirement board, trying to figure out, is that regular compensation? Is it not regular compensation? I think yes is the answer.
They also put in there that if you were on the job, a higher paying job, for one day...
Yeah, I get to that. Exactly. King for the day, they took that out. And that's in response to some of the Boston Fire.
That's what it was called, King for the Day?
They don't call it that, but that's essentially what it was. They did take out the, if you're an elected official, you serve one day, you get full year credit. They took that out.
That's going forward, right?
No, that's... It's for future credible service. That's right. They're not taking it away from you.
Right, okay. I have another question on jobs. I... My substitute teacher had you deduct the percentage for the pension. Going forward, does that... What does that mean to me?
You've had deductions taken from your substitute teacher. That is not... Your prior service is not gonna be an issue. You may have an issue, and this is the next one I'm gonna get to, is they changed the amount... Let me read it. "The service of a state, county, or municipal employee employed or elected in a position receiving compensation of less than $5,000 annually, which service occurs on or after July 1st, 2009, shall not constitute credible service for the purposes of this chapter." That could... And this is one that I have a problem with because it impacts the innocents like yourself and like potentially the lunch lady, potentially call firefighters. And what it does is it says, "If you make less than $5,000 annually, you're not getting credible service for it."
Okay, but I made $14,120 as a county commissioner. Okay, but I...
No, 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 no. That's not the same right. So credible service for your commission duties is not an issue, but your part-time substitution...
I have to make over $5,000.
Could be an issue. Or you won't get credible service for it.
And I never have. Because I think it comes to about $4,500. So what that tells me, unless, you know, unless I teach a summer school course, you know, which...
That's exactly it. So saying the person, potentially like a lunch lady, who doesn't work a lot of hours, maybe not get a lot of pay, that could impact their...
Okay, so as a practical matter, whatever I have as far as the three highest credible years is what I have. So going forward, unless I made more than $5,000 in any, let's say, in any extra job that I had that was... Could potentially be credited credible, then...
That's right. You won't get credible service for it.
Okay, so I might as well stop. Well, what about... Now, how does that affect the so-called deferred compensation piece? Because that's what I used to contribute to before.
Well, it's a good question because really what you'll have to make sure is if your service is not eligible for retirement deductions, and this is saying that it's not, then you'll have to make sure, A, that whoever's issuing the check doesn't deduct retirement from you, and B, they should put you on a deferred comp.
Which is what I had before. And it was... It's four savings, and it was pretty good. So anyways, well, that's good to know.
So the other one that's similar to that...
Next fall, it'll be... I guess the only benefit would be to my personal satisfaction with...
Well, you'll still get the pay, you just won't get the credible service for it.
Well, that was always something that was...
And I think the other significant one is they've changed the way before is if you worked as a member in two different and separate systems, and you went to retire, they would combine that service. So they'd combine your salary, they'd combine your credible service, et cetera, et cetera. Now specifically, they... The legislation calls for each system to calculate your retirement as if you retired solely from that system. Essentially, you'll get two separate retirement calculations.
That's going forward.
That's for any... This section shall not apply to any member who is vested in two or more systems as of January 1st, 2010. You know, actually, where this is significant, it's significant to the Fire Training Academy because we did not make the Fire Academy trainers, most of the firemen, out there employees of the county until 2001. So they're not gonna make the vested section for that particular piece of this there.
But the vested part, although I may not be vested in those other pieces, like, you know, with the Howard School system...
That's right.
Or the rest of it.
Right.
I am vested in Barnstable County, and the contributions that I've been making have been to the Barnstable County Retirement System.
So it won't change your Barnstable County system calculation because, A, you're already vested, and B, you're making more than $5,000. But it certainly does change, and in fact, it will probably prohibit you from ever becoming vested in the Harvard system because, A, you're not making $5,000, you're not getting credible service, and B, if you did, it would change the way they would calculate your benefit. It wouldn't be added together. It would be this one and that one. And that one's gonna be very small, anyways. So it's a significant change for people, I think.
I feel badly for a lot of the lunch ladies that...
Well, I think, you know, this is part of the problem... I'll get on my soapbox just for a second. And this is part of the problem that you make policy based on newspaper articles. It's not always well thought through, and it's not always fully vetted out in terms of what the impacts are. But I think in general, most of these, you know, modifications were probably long overdue. But there are gonna be some impacts to some innocent members of the retirement system who are gonna be probably negatively impacted by some of these changes. There's no question about it. That's it. Okay?
Thank you. Anything else we need to know what's going on around...
Uh, no.
Since I've been out of communication with my telephone?
If you look at your email, I sent you a summary in the Cape Focus.
I did.
Okay, and there was a question on how exactly is that $350,000 transferred from EDC to the Cape Cod Commission that they mentioned in their meeting?
I think that that's going to be discussed...
It's a grant from the EDC license plate.
Okay, but they only have $40,000.
Right.
No, for O-10, they have $500,000, minus 20 for the...
Minus 25.
25. Was it 25 for the...
Right.
For the rest area.
For the rest area.
And then there's something in here for 20. Okay.
So... But it's also been, the question becomes, is this a 350 total with divided by two or three years over time? Is it over time?
Yeah, well, that's...
No?
Well, that's going to be... I think the EDC is putting all those details together, and they're gonna roll all of that out, and I really don't wanna be the spokesperson for them on that particular issue at this time.
Okay, but the... If the Cape Cod Focus is how much they have available to issue in grant funds, both this year and next year.
I happen to be there when that vote went down, and I do know...
What vote was it?
I attended the EDC meeting.
Okay, what did they vote? What was that?
Well, I think that... I'm gonna be there when that vote went down, and I do know...
What vote was it?
I attended the EDC meeting.
Okay, what did they vote? What was that?
Well, I think that... Well, again, I think I would rather the EDC, they are putting forward their comments, so I would rather not...
If they're gonna...
They're going to issue their own rollout statement, so I don't want to...
Yeah, when Pat's here, Bill, next time, or whenever the situation is right.
I would like that.
Let's laugh, Pat, you know?
It's not... It's not... All of the details have not yet been worked out, so for me to speak about it right now would be a little bit premature.
My concern, you know, my concern is that if at this group, in their minutes, which have gone out to several people, you know, if we're talking about this fund transfer, frankly, didn't know too... I knew that we'd been talking about it, but I didn't know that it had been, you know, it was done. I think I've just meeting what I consider to be my responsibility to find out what's going on. And when will I know, or when will I be told?
Hopefully, I thought it might be this week. It looks like it might be next week, but...
Would you put that on the agenda for next week?
Yes, let's put that on. And you know, and we'll even... I think we need to invite... They need to come before us.
Here's what it says. CC, focus Steering Committee invited me to Cape Cod, hear more about the core mission of the Cape Cod Economic Development Committee and Commission. Now that they've agreed upon the partnership, the Cape Cod Economic Development Council joining $350,000 with Commission in consolidating administration with the CCEDDC. This meeting will also review the stats of the Cape Cod project.
Duly noted.
Duly noted is right. As we sign these, I don't have any other business to...
Do you have any bullets for the assembly?
I would say two things. I would say that you've got an update, a thorough update from the Regional Emergency Planning Committee on their sheltering plan. You know what to say about it? Six shelters, two, two, and two.
Yes, and on the 27th, they're doing their first one at Dennis, September 2.
Yeah, they're doing a BY demonstration.
And it's going to be a role play.
There you go. Yeah.
10,000 shelters, about 750 volunteers.
Yeah? Yeah?
Yeah.
Sounds great. Yeah, that was a good, yeah. And I would do an update on the, I, I missed it, but I have Beth's copy here from, on the summer food program. And you can do this, you can take this, you can, you can invite them to that. It's free food.
I have a...
Another great...
You have it, then you can read it.
And what is, yes, what is the date on that again?
July 8th.
July 8th, is the beginning of that?
If that's an extra copy, though.
Yeah, yeah, you can take it. Yeah, July 8th, this is Wednesday.
We serve great burgers.
So...
I will say that.
And we're working on a few issues with the food program. You'll probably see some emails flying about between Beth and RDL and myself.
I do also want to say that the state senator stopped in here and he said he was going over to talk about the wind sighting, the EFSB. The Cape Cod Commission did file to have that reviewed.
Yeah, there's a press release out about...
Yes, and there, if anyone is wondering, I know that this is a very hot issue. It is, it's a, it's a passionate issue on both sides, and unfortunately, each side feels they're tremendously right. And having been through last, the campaign last year and talking to people from one end of the Cape to the other, that ultimately came up a lot. And I got to appreciate that those people who were for it, were all, were for it for all the reasons that we are, that anyone would support alternate energies because we're behind, we're late, and many people feel, no matter what the cost, even if it is going to cost five times as much to, in our electrical bills, now, this is some people's opinion, it's, it's not the, it, it's, it's what we get for not having this done sooner and, and let's go forward. Some people might have concern about the money. The, I do think that there are those people who just don't want them out there because it's going to interfere with either their aesthetic view or, but that, that group I found to be a very minor group. There are passionate feelings against it that are almost lying on spiritual, and then for the Wampons, it is a spiritual belief. So, so what I'm saying is, as this goes forward, we are not disparaging, and this is not about the merits of the project, it is about the, the fact that the EFSB has jived over and avoided dealing with the regional review, which probably would have gone very, very much in favor, because there wasn't much they could really say one way or the other. And it, it hurts jurisdiction and sovereignty of the Cape Cod Commission Act. And that is what's the issue, not the project. And if anyone wants to have, to look at the position that is being taken in that, they can go on to the CapeCodCommission.org website, and there is a statement about this matter on their website, the detailed position of the Cape Cod Commission and county's position on that. So I just wanted to say that to the camera. And Bill, did you have anything to say?
Well, I did vote for the procedural denial of it for the same reason.
Right, exactly, as we all did, so...
I don't think people voted on it.
To, oh, that was on the, that was on previous commissioners, okay.
And when you came, think about the mission, the procedural denial, which has led to this appeal issue.
That's exactly right.
We weren't given by the EFC, by the elected board, the deciding board.
...permit processes of utility. However, by giving a blanket permit, all utilities, including any power plants, very broad act, and although it's done to, because we're all concerned about our global warming issues and our energy issues, it is again one of those, those, as you said, even with the retirement, it's again one of these acts that have been taken by people in the executive offices of the state, and are we looking at the long-term consequences of this? So that is the, the issue, and people really should take a look at, of what, what, what that means for their local community. Because although you might want as many windmills as possible, you're not gonna want a power plant that's going to help spark those windmills and, and produce that energy when it's, when it's down. And you might not have anything to say about that by pushing this legislation, so that's what's at stake.
I'm just wanting to think, I, I actually wasn't here last Wednesday. Um, I don't know where I was, but anyways, we had the meeting with the League of Women Voters.
Yes, tell us.
Oh, it was wonderful.
Well, I saw the letter from Jerry. She thought you were great.
Yeah, well, everybody was great. I'll just share, this is our standard, our standard, when I was at, I work from here, we used, there was a lot of people having babies, and the guys, Jim Reedy, my friend Jack Hanlon and myself, we'd have to get them presents, and we were bachelor guys, we didn't have to get them. So we had the stand, we call it Standard Product 82, and we just got a thing with, you know, baby care products and stuff, and we just did that. So this is my Standard Product 82 when I do these standard things.
Well, hello, Maggie. How are you? Were you over there at that meeting?
She, do you have, you have, you don't have anything?
Thank you, Maggie.
No, I'm working on it, let her, it's coming to me unless you tell me otherwise.
No, that sounds good. And so we had, George did an overview of the Health Department, Mike McGuire did an overview of Cooperative Extension, and Patty Daly did an overview of some of the commission stuff that's going on.
Excellent.
Everybody did a great job. We had 14 people from the League of Women Voters there, so that was very well received.
Impressive, right?
And what we are working on now, I asked Bill Clark, one of the things they asked to see was the new farm, the revised farm, and I said, that's terrific. We are trying to put together a little tour, as Bill Clark has done previous summers.
Who, who gave the presentation for the call?
Mike, Mike McGuire, yeah. He did a similar one here, he broadened it a bit, did a great job.
Yes, he was very good.
I did my little PowerPoint thing, they liked that. We're trying to put together a tour to get Bill to secure an RTA bus for August, I think it's 12th, it's the second Wednesday in August. You guys, obviously, what we, I would suggest we do is we come in and maybe sign things.
Is that when they have the funding?
No, that's the following week. And do the farm tour and then maybe a few other sites that either George and Bill picked that might be of interest. So they're aware of that, we're trying to put that together, so that will be our summer.
And they're gonna be invited on that?
They'll be invited on that, yeah.
Excellent.
With you guys in the Assembly, we'll invite them.
That is a great tour, and maybe we can get Steve to come along.
Sure.
And you can tour the, and you can film all the wondrous things that the cooperative is involved in.
I've done that tour with the, with the Alternative Septics, and I've done a video tour through the Assembly for the, the opening of the jail. So we're, we're ready, willing, and able to follow your leadership.
To, to go on location.
That's good.
I remember when we did that.
Excuse me?
On the, on the, on the septic betterment, we all...
I have to keep the meeting open while we sign these, correct?
Remember, we...
We don't?